Beside City Council Joint Regular Committees for Thursday, February 22, 2018. Members Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucco, Monica Sack, Doug Vogt, and Andrew Shaw. Looks like all are present. We will call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Is there any public participation at this point? Anybody wish to address us? If not, we'll move on to our order committee business. First will be the Health and Safety Committee, and I will call it to order at 6:01 PM. And our first item is the request to change the traffic control map. I have in your packet dated February 9, a letter, Beside City Council Dear Health and Safety Committee, the City Besire's Traffic Commission would like to request the Health and Safety Committee approve the following amendments to the traffic control map. First, opening the north side of the city hall parking lot alley to allow traffic to turn left to access the business drive-through window. The 90-day trial ended December 7 with no issues reported. Secondly, no parking on the west side of Cherry Lane from Upland to Oakwood. The 90-day trial ended on February 9, 2018 with no issues reported. Thank you, Jeffrey L. Research Traffic Commission. Any questions or discussion related to these two?
I make a motion to amend the traffic control map, allow these changes.
Have a motion, Mr. McKeever?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shaw. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say a nay. Motion will carry.
So you make sure you're aware that you have a paper you need to sign before you leave?
Secondly, is the ambulance service. I attended the meeting last night of the Central Dray Ambulance District. Couple things to report back at this point. We are, you have a copy of the current contract in your packet here. This contract expires at the end of this calendar year, so at the end of 2018. The ambulance district is, needs to prepare to go out to bid with a new proposal, and they need, simply put, they need to know whether we are in or whether we are out, and they have given us a deadline of April 6 to give them that answer. So we've got some research to do that's going to take place. I've met with several people already, and we'll continue to meet with several more so that we can get the information, so when we do start discussing it, we can look at all sides properly. So we'll do that subsequent meeting after tonight. Any questions on anything at this point? You know, the meeting last night was a rather lengthy meeting, but a lot of good discussion, and a lot of what else was discussed. And they understand the fact that we have to come back to council to get, you know, our input for me to take to them, so they understand that no action is taken yet at this point. Any questions?
All the current protocols and everything are still in force from the contract?
Yeah.
Nothing's changed as of right now?
Yeah.
Until April 6, they're asking just...
April 6, they're asking if we want to continue to be a part of the group to go forward with the bid that would start on January 1, 2019, for a three-year contract. And if we choose that we're not to for some reason, then, you know, as you've seen in the news, they have decided they're going to form another district without the city to go out and look for the ability to get tax levies, and then they'll put out a proposal with that group rather than the current department, basically, in a nutshell. Okay, Bruce?
So what is their general consensus? What are, as a group, what do they think that they would be looking for as an ambulance district? I mean, do they perceive that they would probably still continue with like a zero subsidy? Is that what their, the ambulance district is looking for? Is still a continued zero subsidy on the ambulance provider?
It's a possibility. You know, the Hire-And-Use Code says that they have to do a rebid at this point because they already extended the contract. So Matt Carlisle, who represents the ambulance board, feels that they have to follow the Hire-And-Use Code and put out for a new three-year contract. At that point, when they get bids in, I would suppose, we all love that things are free. It may not be possible. We don't know what the economy's like. We don't know the financial state of the current provider, and how they're going to bid, and what other companies may bid as well. So that would remain to be seen. I did do the math, just for a point of reference, is if we, if there is any type of subsidy that ever were to come up, and this is probably getting the cart before the horse because we've got other things to look at, but given the population of the city, just around 12,000, and the population of the residents that live in the Central Dray Ambulance District outside of the city being about 14,000, that would make us responsible for about 46% of whatever subsidy came in at that point. So those are all things, you know, compiling just an absolute plethora of data that we'll be able to go over hopefully at the next meeting. Any other questions? If not...
Let me ask if there's anyone.
Oh, any questions from the public? Jesse, any input from you?
No, that's pretty much what happened last night.
Yeah, you were there too.
Yeah.
All right, if not, then I will recess. Health and Safety at 6:07 PM.
All right, and I will call to order the Public Ladies and Building Committee at These are very good pictures that you can pass around. They are...
These are different pictures.
Those are different items. That's the parking lot behind the Dillinger's and the...
Crazy Fox.
Crazy Fox, yeah. The ice buildup, so I've got to complain about that.
Yeah, that's in your packet.
So that's parking lot number three, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, that's parking lot. I guess the, which I didn't go back there and check this out, taking the words for it, that the ice, like those boards are building there, but I had to ask about looking into this last year, into the parking lots, and I guess, and we've talked the previous year about, you know, we're going to need repaid, they're going to need rebuilt, and they're, you know, we're going to have to put money into that. So I guess one of my suggestions is to, and do one of my, kind of, not pet peeve, but idea, is that people parking these, it's supposed to be two-hour parking, but they'll be there all day, you know. So it's, you know, it's kind of a disservice to some of the shop owners downtown, or could be, you know, I don't know. I did see, when I went into chiropractors, down, the one downtown there, that they had on the door, it said, it said, "Please do not park in family video parking." So apparently, people were parking in there, I don't know, just for ease of parking, or there wasn't enough parking, or what. But anyhow, so we took meters out years ago, and it's probably not smart to put meters back in, but I guess, and the mayor's not here, or anyone, but maybe the law director could help us. Is there a way we could permit park those, that if you had a permit, you pay so much, and then we could use that money to keep them there and keep them going? And if people want to park there all day, fine, if you got a permit, you know, we'd have to decide on the cost, and, you know. And then, either, you know, once a month, or once a week, or something, if a patrolman could just walk through there on a nice day and put a notice on it, "Hey, you need a permit if you're going to park here," you know. I mean, we don't have to police it constantly, but, you know, if permit parking, because, you know, I had that one across from me, and, you know, just the same cars in there every day. And it's okay, but, you know, we're, we need to repair these, and...
They may not own them.
You know, and, yeah. So, you know, I see that doing two things. It gets, you know, it's either going to empty some of those spots out, or it's going to be, or, you know, and we're going to make some money to keep them up, you know, over the years, you know, start a fund that keeps this money. So that's the solution I had. I just kind of wanted to run that by everyone, I guess.
Do we have to retain ownership?
We have to. And to your question, yeah, you could do something like permission.
Yeah, we could do permission. And is there something we need to sell? Maybe so. So, you know, I just, them, they're just getting worse, as we go, and, you know, if you do want to sell, we can't sell them.
Well, I think we're all aware that we can't, we cannot use street funds to do parking lots, correct?
Right.
So that eliminates that money. That's one of the biggest drawbacks to this, is the fact that we cannot do, use any of our street money to do this. Would we be better off to set a plan, like a three- or a four-year plan, that one year we want to do this one, and one year we want to do that one, you know, that kind of thing, to fix them up? The, you know, some of them, everybody assumes that those are our parking lots downtown, but they're not, you know, especially the ones behind Dillinger's and the Crazy Fox. We only own them one closest to the, closest to their buildings. We do not own those other two, so we really have no impact over there, other than to contact the landlords and say, you know, would you do something with those? Just from a personal standpoint, going to the courthouse is a big thing, because they have all that parking over there, and, you know, thank God they put all those parking lots in there. But the two parking lots, they're right beside, on the other, north side of the tracks and everything. They've got one on each side of Walnut Street there, but there's rarely anything there left for anyone who's not an employee, or someone that's regularly at the courthouse to go. I mean, we created, we created some spots down that alley to get some police cars and stuff over there, and out of the ones on the square, and then the one that's right there beside the Copper Kettle Works. That one fills up pretty quickly with, I think, people that are going across the street to... And a lot of times, those may or may not be people that are even in town a lot, you know. So the idea of requiring somebody to have a permit to go there to park them...
I don't mean, I mean, if you're, if it's just two hours, you know, you're going into the street, that's free, but if you're going to be there over two hours, it would require a permit. You can park there all day, park there all year, you know. But by doing that, you know, and I don't know what we would charge, but we could at least generate some funds that we're going to fund to keep these up.
But then would we also then be required to make sure they've got a permit that there's a parking space for them?
In different lots, they have different parking levels of use. Some are more residentially used, and some are more temporarily used, so you can set different standards for different lots.
Yeah, that's, I don't know, just, you know, we need to get it fixed. We need, you know, keep them up. This ice, they're telling, I didn't go out in the place, but they're saying that it's slanted, you know, towards the buildings. So, you know, they've got investments. I know, you know, Brian's trying to buy, or has all the Crazy Fox, you know, and so he didn't, you know, and Dillinger's is the same way, you know. We've got a couple people, and for people that hopefully will keep these businesses going, and, you know, I think we should kind of help them out, so they don't get ticked off and go remember to...
It's probably been a good many years since anything, any attention has been given to those parking lots. And of course, you know, the same way with our city streets, everything took a beating this year. As far as, you know, when you have to plow as often as they had to be plowed this year, the plows are not tying to the parking lots. They created...
I had heard, and I can't remember where I heard it, so I just don't know if there's any validity to it, but maybe I'll just ask the question if anybody does know the answer. If not, we can look into it. I heard that Bakers had offered to pay to reseal and re-strike the lot next to their building. And I don't know if that's a true statement or not, but, you know, we're talking about where, how we're going to...
I think that was part of the deal that they wanted to...
Okay.
I think.
I mean, you know, they have signs hanging on their building restricting who can park in, in what spots in the city lot.
Well, and technically, they can't do that.
I understand that, but...
Because anybody going to the Besire's diner can park there, especially where it says "Bakers Carry Out." It doesn't matter. And they have dumpsters on our property. Since they opened up the outdoor patio, they moved their dumpsters onto our parking lot. And they own the parking lot on the other side of the diner, which would be, I think, a little more feasible to put their own dumpsters on their own property instead of on public property. That's just an idea.
Because that opens up three spots of parking.
Yeah. Well, and that's the same thing. You could permit dumpsters.
Yeah, they should probably have to pay for having dumpsters, and that includes behind Dillinger's and the Crazy Fox.
Yeah, yes.
They are sitting on public property, and it's impeding on parking.
But, no, you know, I don't want to be, you know, I want to help them, but...
Right.
Also, you know, with, there's another business that's opening at some point here. They're near Bakers, so you're going to have Bakers, you're going to have the beauty shop that's in there now, and you're going to have this new business, and you're going to have Little Athens. So, and they all, you know, they're all basically street, have to park on the street, so it's going to be interesting to see.
You know, there is an ability there on, that's Mary Street there, that one house was taken down. There's an empty lot there. You know, the landowner there, they considered, if we had a discussion with him, about inputting in a parking lot there. I mean, for them to do it, they wouldn't necessarily have to pay them, would they, if they stoned it?
Depending on zoning, right?
Yeah, we'd have to look at it, okay.
Parking lot is necessarily permitted in that area.
Because we also have the one right downtown, too, right next to the Tourism Bureau. There's a, there's an empty lot there with our favorite landlord.
Yes.
It's owned by somebody, but not all of that is owned by that person. It's a portion of it.
Only a half of it?
Yeah.
Okay, Bruce, you got a question?
Well, when you're saying parking, and any, any surface, as recently as, as a business that was just recently open in the last six months there on Perry and Sandusky, I know that they asked for additional parking there, and they had to provide off-street parking, but they had to do, they weren't allowed just to put stone in. They actually had to have to pay to have it paved with blacktop. And then when you're asking an individual to go ahead and create a parking lot for businesses, they're going to have to figure out how to pay that stormwater utility that all of a sudden will come back to bite them.
Well, they have, you know, plenty of unattended lots down in Columbus, that there's a little thing that's there, and you go and have to put, put your money into. And I wouldn't mess with those people down there in Columbus with that. They're going to get their money.
As a follow-up, I have received numerous phone calls from people that own businesses on North Sandusky, and I think we all have on the last console, because we had discussed this matter before. The biggest thing is, is that some businesses park on the main drag, and then there's other businesses that feel like they're slighted because there's not enough turnover throughout the day for the cars that are parking there. Now, I look at it as enforcing the laws that we have on the books. If we're not going to enforce our two-hour parking, then why don't we just do away with the two-hour parking altogether, and make it a free-for-all, which it is pretty much right now?
I do know what you're saying. I agree with you, because there's three, three vehicles that park at the south end of Sandusky, north of Charles. Every morning, I see same three vehicles.
They have Wall Street parking available, don't you think?
That, and I was going to say, and I do recall, they do have Wall Street parking, and they refuse to use it. So, and we don't enforce that. So, and, you know, we do have another resident downtown who does have her own off-street parking, and she uses it. So, because she needs it for her business to have people to park. And we have to, we have to figure something out on what we're going to do. I agree with you, but what do we do? How do we, how do we enforce it? How are we going to budget this? How much is it going to cost? Why do we, you know, one thing, my question is, why do we own number three? Why don't we offer it for public sale, and talk to the two owners of those two businesses that use it the most, and see if they would come to an agreement on purchasing it together somehow, or splitting the property, without changing it, that it stays a parking lot, or...
Well, there's no way they do that, correct?
Because we have to put out the bid.
Correct. But I mean, the most likely persons who would want to buy it, but I mean, it's open to anybody.
I don't want it.
I don't want it.
But that's...
I put one to head.
I get you, just saying.
Okay.
But that's the thing, though. Once we give up control of it, we no longer, you know, they could decide to make that a beer garden, or, you know what I'm saying?
But they have to get a permit to get it. They'd have to, the zoning would have to...
Well, yeah, but, in essence, they could just, you know, they could fence it in and...
Clean it up.
Yeah, I mean, there's probably things they could, but so that's the thing. Once...
I'm saying...
Once you get rid of, we need to give it up control. And even if it doesn't mean a parking lot, and they keep it nasty, then there's work that we have to, you know, continue a little after then, and say, "Hey, this is nasty. We cleaned it up." Yes, Bruce?
Well, it's just, you know, one, a lot of these parking problems, you know, a lot of people don't even realize that, you know, without, you know, without a stop sign, you don't know to stop. If you don't have a traffic sign, you don't know what, what is required of you for when it comes to the laws. You know, a lot of people, I'm sure, that, if you probably ask anybody, they don't know what the parking regulations are downtown, because we have no signs posted anywhere in the downtown area. Nowhere.
No.
Nowhere do we have what the regulations are in the downtown area. I mean, I know we have aluminum lampposts. There's no reason why we couldn't put aluminum signs up that wouldn't deteriorate on aluminum lampposts, or, I don't know, or you could do something to help the general public, let them know, because if they know, they're not going to be negligent on purpose if they know the rules of, you know, of what transpires. Now everybody, now, I look at it a lot different. I haven't been able to drive for quite some time.
You get a...
A lot of the older people, when they, they want to go to Andy's business, or whoever's business downtown, if they can't find a parking spot in the front of their building, they'll have to drive around the block. And then they'll drive around the block third and the fourth time, waiting for someone to pull up, because these older people, they can't walk that far. And it's a disservice to the citizens that, you know, they're being penalized for the people that park there all during the day. You know, I kind of look at it, you know, you, as you get older, you know, you don't want to walk as far, or you might fall down and break a hip, and you break a hip, and you're on your way to the rest of them. So, you know, and as far as the dumpster idea, you know, that's probably the most, best thing I've ever heard. You know, we want to be business-friendly, and say, "Okay, yeah, you can have your dumpsters there," but maybe that wouldn't be a bad idea, you know. Maybe it would be a permitting thing to actually have a dumpster, pay a permit fee. You know, it helps the business out, puts a little bit of money in the coffers to do the line striping, or whatever it is. But it, I would think that it would have to be somewhat money-making operation. It couldn't be, I mean, it would have to help.
Not like we're going to charge them, you know, what, you know, absorb a fee.
And it's not about trying to make, in my mind, it's not about trying to make a few extra bucks for the city. It's about, I would like, if we did something, like I would like to see that to go, this special fund.
Just for that.
Right, I agree.
Just thought, key to me, when we did the downtown project, where we went in and we took out all the overhead stuff and everything, one of the items that we did talk about, and really never followed up with, because there are a lot of cities that have these, that on the ends of each of their blocks, that there's a, and they're very decorative, they're very nice, they're not intrusive into anything, but it allows you to put information in, like a church is this way, or something like, something like that, that is up basically out of the way, but like something could go on there about, you know, two-hour parking. You know, something like that would be, I think it could be an addition, and an enhancement to the downtown area, but still get our point across, as Bruce said in the first part of his, you know, how many people realize that they're not supposed to. But I do have to make the point, that I do remember when my father had the downtown dining store, and yes, that was 150 years ago. But anyway, they still have parking problems downtown, with people parking there all day, and that's not good for the downtown businesses, because they're counting on that. And a lot of times, I see that during the day. I'm one of those that's driven around the blocks several times, hunting for a parking space, and usually they pop up. So I guess I didn't see in the downtown, at least in the couple blocks south of the square, where that was as much an issue as it is on the north, because, I mean, people are going in there to eat. And so they're going to be staying 45 minutes to an hour and a half. And that makes a difference in that area.
So, I don't know. I just, you know, it's a situation that's probably not getting any better, but you just begin.
Dan?
Yes?
As far as the number three lot, behind the Crazy Fox and Dillinger's, I've actually talked to Brian Rockwell, because he actually came into our office looking for insurance when he bought that place, and he told me some of the things that he's looking at doing moving forward. There's a very good chance that, I mean, knowing how Shaun Ridgway is already, and knowing what Brian's plans are, I mean, there's a very good chance that they may want that lot if it was offered to them. Brian...
If we get it offered to the public, we can't, has to be a...
Well, I was saying, that's something you're thinking about. There's a very good chance that they would want to look into that, because of the fact that he's planning on redoing the entire speakeasy down in the basement, putting new awnings up on the outside, redoing the outside structure. I mean, he's got, it's going to take him some time, but he plans on dressing that back up and making it look, he wants it to look like a 1960s, 19, early 1900s kind of atmosphere. So, I mean, I guess, you could put it out the bid.
Yeah, I mean, that's just something we have to look at. So, yeah, I don't know. I don't know where to go with it. Oh, one thing, and I don't know if any of the law director could help us on this. You know, you were saying that, yeah, obviously, we don't want to put one of the patrolmen out there to troll in these, but we do have the explorers, you know, maybe it'd be a project for them once a month to, to look at these or something.
Well, you're talking enforcement of a traffic issue, which requires a certain level of authority to be able to...
Well, I'm not saying really even writing a ticket, just to, I mean, at the beginning, maybe remind them that, you know, hey...
You know, it's cheap, it's better to speak to manpower, but certainly if you're talking traffic enforcement, you know, sometimes, you know, some part-time meter reader types are more cost-effective than a uniformed officer.
Oh, yeah.
There's a variety of ways, but just, yeah. Bruce? I know that we don't want to take it away from the attractiveness of the downtown, but, you know, I would think maybe a compromise of what Mayor President said, you know, at the end of the block, if there's...
I can investigate that.
Something investigation-wise.
I'm glad they.
That you'd have something that would look like a lamppost that, that, you know. I, 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 I would note, uh, that Mr. Rosstech had looked at that, uh, for some reason, for something that was due to respect for the downtown thing. And he looked at some other towns that had those and some costs and had already put together something like that.
The other family.
For another project.
So we could, uh, uh. We could also put, could we not just, especially on these five parking lots? We could put a couple of signs on each of the parking lots showing that it's a two-hour.
The parking lots have the signs.
Do they?
Yeah, some of them do.
Some of them do.
Behind the region, that's a dollar and, uh, and actually the one, uh, beside Major's Bus, down by the dumpsters, right by the dumpsters. It says two-hour parking in that dumpster within their.
Yeah, they are. But I'm saying, we could probably put a couple of other signs up to, just on those of way, way to downtown. I mean, I don't know how much the signs are, but it could be that expensive.
Well, I think what was actually is, everybody knows, and I would, I'm as guilty as the next guy. Uh, if you know it's not gonna be enforced, you're gonna do it, you know? Uh, you know, I'll blow my, I'll blow my grass in the, in the street, you know? If, if, if nobody's gonna do anything about it, but that's just an example. I would never do that on purpose. But, uh, you know, if, if you know you're gonna get away with it, you're gonna do it. Uh, so, you know, that's why I'm, I'm thinking, you know, if we just warn people and if, if we could, we could permit the, uh, some of the lots maybe rather than, than, uh, just, you know, we could generate some funds to, uh, to keep them up so that they can continue to use them in the future, so. So, just my idea, and I just wanted to address that ice issue, uh, for the property owners. So, I mean, I guess we can continue this discussion. Bruce?
I just wanted to say that was a, uh, a good discussion, it was a, a needed discussion.
So, we'll, we'll just keep that open in public land, so. Oh, Mr. Sturman, yeah.
Could I add something here?
Yeah.
Uh, along with the limited signage downtown on the street, if, uh, there's limited signage put up, how about the possibility of marking along curb, two-hour parking as well?
Yeah.
That would be more of a, of notice that, that there's two-hour limited parking there.
Yeah.
Because it'd be harder to see just at, at the beginning of the block or the end of the block, that it's two hours. But if they pull up along the curb, they can see something written there and they might take notice.
Yeah. That's an excellent idea too. So, yeah, you know, we've got some good ideas here, so. Uh, any other discussion on the parking lot? Move on, okay. Uh, moving on to land acquisition. Uh, did, did you wanna take this, Rob?
I, I will, I'll just kinda briefly update. We, we talked about this at the end of the day, executive session. Um, I will note that we have begun some discussions with the attorneys, uh, for the current owner. Uh, right now, we're trying to do some research as to what the extent of tax liabilities, uh, the, the leads, all those sorts of things. We make sure we know exactly what numbers we're, we're talking about. And, uh, as soon as we have some of that together, we'll, we'll get back to you.
Okay, well, I would just, you know, I can give that some thought too, and just put my two cents worth in here. Uh, that, uh, although I think it would be a great, uh, great to get that ISOR out of there. Uh, I did notice that both, you know, if, if, if we thought we turned it over for, for a business, uh, the, uh, what was the Caddy Cup suffer, VFW, the VFW's for sale down there. So, you know, it's not like there's not other properties for sale that, so, so if we did wanna put a, this, a business, wanna move, there's other places that, that they may wanna move. You know, we were talking that if we did clear that out, make possibly a business would wanna move in there, but.
I, I don't believe we publicly identified what property we're looking at yet.
Oh.
Because obviously there's reasons to not publicly identify a property because costs can increase.
Oh, okay.
Note that, uh, abandoned buildings across the street behind the Tim Hortons, that, uh, prices escalated, as well as with the, uh, properties on the north side of town that may have originally been slated for a Tim Hortons and the Maddos. And, uh, and that became public, changed the, uh.
Actual price, yeah?
Yeah, changed the, the situation.
Okay.
Good option.
Yeah.
How, is this, I just didn't stop here, but it's printed February twenty-first, but is the, the overhead view, is this actually of today when, or is that today, yesterday when that was taken?
I, I don't know.
I was just curious, are all those, do we know if all those units are still in there?
I don't know.
Most of them look like they are still there. They, they look like they're, but not specifically. Drive by it every day.
That's right.
Okay, anymore? All right, uh, cause now we're on to the tower space contracts. I don't know if we have any new developments on that, do we? Did we know about?
No, no, I mean, it's, it's in this committee for you guys to decide what you wanna do with expected bids or, or whatever. Um, obviously, Mr. Fekhouser and Wavelink are, uh, I don't know.
Very interested.
Sitting on pins and needles, uh, highly interested, uh, need to know, uh, need to, need to have some sort of long-term planning, uh, in place. Um, and I don't know that there's an easy solution for that. Uh, one of the suggestions, uh, has been some, some way to extend the current contract or to provide some sort of an agreement, um, moving forward. Um, those are all possibilities. Um, I think at a, at a minimum, um, we need to assure, uh, Wavelink, um, that, you know, we're not kicking them off tomorrow. Um, the contract date is, obviously, there's, there's a discrepancy between whether it's a February eighteen or April eighteen date. And I think we, we, at least my opinion would be the more lenient, April eighteen date is the more appropriate date to work from. Um, but that's rapidly approaching, and it has been for some time now. The, um, so the issues are, what can we do short-term? Um, you know, I, I, I think, uh, you know, some sort of an agreement to at least allow Wavelink to continue to exist. Um, while this body figures out what it wants to do. Uh, any bid process is gonna take a significant period of time. And while we may not be able to do a, a contract or, or something along those lines, we could certainly do some sort of an agreement that would allow for continued operation and provide some notice to Wavelink, you know, you know, so that they don't have to worry about, you know, being given a cease or desist order, twenty-four hours' notice or, or less. Uh, making sure that they have at least, you know, thirty or sixty or ninety-day notice or something, you know, if, if a contract was bid. And then they're gonna have that kind of notice, cause it's gonna go through the bid process ultimately, and, you know, we may very likely be the winning bidder. But, um, at, at a minimum, some sort of notice before, you know, they would have to make any changes. So, you know, what, what this body wants to do is up to them, and we can, my, I would think that at a minimum, some sort of an agreement that, you know, to continue operations and some sort of assurance that, uh, it'll be giving reasonable notice, um, should any changes be made. Would kinda be where to, where to start from, I would think.
Yes, Bruce?
Um, what's a, what's a normal, what, what is a, a good business model for letting someone be known that their contract is coming due? I, well, I kinda refer back to the ambulance a little bit, is that they're talking, you're in advance that their contract is coming up. And so, whatever, whatever would be made out, I would, wouldn't I, wouldn't you? Well, I would presume that you would have to follow a, a model that I'm familiar with, that I just listened to, that we're giving, the, the ambulance board is giving a year's notice to what, what might be the new proposals out there. Well, actually, the ambulance board contract provides for thirty-day notice for us to withdraw. It, it's not, it's, so they're, they're just being proactive, is what you're telling me, right? They're being proactive as a group? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, and really standard is, in any time of these situations, generally thirty days notice. I mean, I, I don't know that that's necessarily best here, um, and, and there's, you know, it's kind of up to us. I mean, certainly sixty or ninety days is probably not, uh, out of, out of question. Um, but we continue on, on essentially kind of a month-to-month, um, scenario with, with that kind of assurance that, you know, you know, using the vacay, um, you know, given any notice before we had a vacay or a thing. The bid process is gonna take, I mean, if we, if we, if you passed it today, it would take us three months um, to go through the advertising, get bids in, and get them open at a minimum. So, um, you know, so sort of, you know, month-to-month, that, that would, with that assurance that we give ninety-day notice or something, I, I think it'd be doable, and I don't think it would violate, uh, any more than, than maybe already, uh, violating any, uh, bid laws or anything like that.
Well, here's, here's kinda what I'm thinking, you tell me if I'm all right. Uh, uh, I would like to see that we extend, uh, this contract or continue this contract for one year. And within six months, we're gonna let him know, uh, if we can, if, if we can continue on a longer contract. So that gives us six months to figure out what's going on, and it gives him a year to keep his equipment up there. And I haven't seen any action out of, you know, I haven't seen these, all these, uh, people beating the door out to, to get this stuff. And, and that's the thing, you know, we had people all over the place saying, hey, I want it, I want, you know, yeah, let's start the bidding process and let's get this over. But, you know, that's his business and, and, you know.
I, I, my only concern with that is, uh, extending the contract and, and offering it as a, as a one-year contract. There, there's a wide, there's a, there's a big difference between maybe something that was done without bid negligently or through an act of oversight or just honest mistake versus an intentional act.
Yeah.
And, uh, and that's why I think it would be much more within the provision, not, not that any of it is, but you, you. There'd be less problem with, you know, an ongoing agreement to stay in place and, well, we figure out.
So you're saying to, to just continue it, we would actually need to repit it?
Yes.
Or is if we did an agreement?
Well, I mean, that, that's fine too, I mean, I'm not saying continue or make a new contract, just continue.
Yeah.
An agreement to continue for, and then basically, I guess that's what I'm saying, agreement to continue for, and, and he'll have an answer in six months. And then that gives him six months to, you know, find new towers or.
So you're saying instead of like a ninety-day notice, like a hundred-and-eighty-day notice?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, that's fine.
And it gives us six months, it gives him a whole year to, you know, do what he has to do. I know he just moved in that building out there, he's probably got stuff he does, wants to do, not worry about this.
And I think, I think that's fine, and, and, and you're, cause you're not really entering into a lease, you're, you're just in agreement that you're gonna continue, maintain status quo while the city is investigating what it wants to do. And then the only question would be, you know, what conditions or anything that you wanna have during that time as part of that agreement? Obviously, the hundred-and-eighty-day notice, uh, with respect to, you know, should, if it goes out to bid and should Wavelink not be the winning bidder, whether it can do that. Uh, some of the things that are, um, that we might wanna look at during that interim period is, you know, whether there's insurance or an indemnification clause. Um, historically, we've never billed for the electrical use, um, that, that's out there. Um, the, uh, uh, exclusivity, there's, uh, currently is an exclusivity clause which, under the current contract, might be problematic if we're having people out there looking and crawling around with the towers, investigating, you know, consultants or engineers or anything like that. Um, so, um, those are all things that we have to, I mean, you know, you guys would wanna talk about as to whether or not we want it covered in any kind of agreements as we move forward.
Yes, Bruce?
Oh, I just think for the investment that is already there, you know, I gotta look at it, and I'm thinking as a, as if I were a business person, I would like to at least have some assurance that, you know, six months isn't much. You know, if you got an investment made, you know.
Well, I.
I would like to see it continued longer than six months. I mean, if it, if you're saying that there's a, a language that you're stating that there's a difference between continuation and new lease, uh, I would say make, make it longer. And, and I also look at it as, you know, it was, we put all our faith in the law directors in the past, all the way down the line. And we thought this was a good deal then, you know, prove to me otherwise. Well, I think you had in your package a, a recent article from the City of Paul Story, um, that is, is kinda the, the exact same situation. Um, and, you know, that, that's a situ, that, that article kinda highlights, you know, they're kinda dealing with the same thing with respect to these contracts and, um, how to best move forward. Uh, a lot of, a lot of towns are struggling with this right now. Uh, Akron just went through a situation with their leases on, on their towers, where they just, uh, they, you know, they ended up selling their leases. So, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of changes, technology changes, currently there ain't anybody that changes the technology in the last ten years. Sell towers and all that sort of thing, so, um, I don't know, I mean, at some point in time, I, I think it would be, uh, it'd be very beneficial for us to have some, you know, professional consultant, just like we do at the airport, just like we do with Mill and Tidney Street, we, we have engineers for, we, we throw in specialists for water. Um, I don't know that we know, you know, one way or the other. No, but all I, and as I was saying, this is that, you know, uh, fair is fair, I think, you know? Okay, bring in the consultants.
Well, that's why.
We're gonna have, we're gonna figure out where we're gonna, who's gonna pay for it, and that's great, I mean, that's fine, bring, bring in the consultants, right? I just, I just don't wanna see us be willy-nilly and just, you know, I, I'd like to have something that's, you know, at least you can continue on and do business until we decide what's going on ourselves. Well, we, actually, two years ago, I think anybody, I think you've been willy-nilly on this one. No, but now all of a sudden, we're talking about it, and, and now's the, now the deadline is, you're gonna learn.
So can we, what can we do? Can we?
Can we ask him to draw up a draft contract or a draft?
Well, I, yeah, I, I mean, I'd be, I'd be cautious about a contract, but I definitely think we could, I definitely think we could put together an, an agreement that would allow things to continue and give, uh, ample notice, uh, should things change. Um, and, and also would, you know, give us the leeway to, you know, pursue whatever we're gonna do, should. I don't know what, what, what that's gonna be, you know, cause you guys gotta kinda make that decision.
Mr. Ricky, you're right.
The section ten of the contract, as it says here, you know, at the end of the set ten-year term, if I hear extension may be granted, is that saying that we're, I, I, you're lawyer, I can't tell, but my understanding, the only way we extended it is by this contract saying it's a five-year.
You, you could extend it for five years, should, should you so choose.
Correct, but I'm saying if you only say a one-year or whatever, is that voiding this contract? I, I don't know, I'm asking you, I, I'm not a lawyer, so.
No, that, that contract will, will terminate at the conclusion of ten years unless it is renewed by mutually. unless it is renewed by mutually agreement with the parties.
Right.
The question becomes whether or not an agreement to extend it for five years would be legal, um, based on the fact that it was never put out to bid for anyone.
Okay, you have your next question, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good question?
Oh, I just had some comments on the, um, you know, professional consulting and stuff, I know quite a bit about this type of stuff, so, you know, I know I'm, I might be a little biased towards myself here, but I'm, I'm pretty knowledgeable, and I'm willing to share that knowledge, but, um, the whole thing with the bidding and all that, I'll just give an example, the village of Cary has two providers on a water tower, and for over ten years, they don't have one, well, they just had some simple agreement, and it never was an issue until provider two comes along, and they ended up, because I, I guess they're, they might not even had an agreement with this first provider, but because provider two was, you know, making a big deal about it, they ended up saying, you guys all, we, we, we got to get everybody under the same agreement here, so they, they each had the same whatever they pay to be on the tower, and the agreement covers basically any provider that comes along, the reason this contract was so, you know, maybe it needs to be bid out is because of the exclusivity clause at the very beginning, I think, if you don't have the exclusivity clause, you can have, uh, in my opinion, an agreement that you don't necessarily have to have something put out for bid, because as long as you offer it to all that want to access it for the same deal, you're not, you're not favoring one or the other, so there's no need to have it bid, and I think, I haven't seen this myself, but I've been told by other wireless providers and things that there was a federal law or something with the FCC that, like, if you had tower space, municipal-owned tower space, and you offered it to a large carrier, like, I'm just going to say, for example, Verizon and AT&amp;T come along, and said, we want to access it too, if you, if you allowed one on, you couldn't deny the other ones on, assuming there was sufficient capacity at the site to hold more than one, so if, if you take the exclusivity part out, I think you're.
Well, that's, and I, I understand what you're saying, but that's what I, that's what I need.
You, you may not be required to have the public bid, because the public bid, you're, you know, you're granting somebody something that nobody else can use, you know, and the exclusivity wording in there is that, so, you know, then that's where you'd say, well, let's see it go to the highest bid or whatever, so if you wanted to maybe go down a different path as far as non-exclusive, that may be an option.
Well, and that's where I have to turn that over to the legal, legal expert here, so, uh, yeah, that would be entirely his thoughts, so, but, other than that, uh, you got something, Bruce?
So what's going to be our decision?
Well, that's what I say, I'd like to do something, I'd like to, uh, end an agreement to.
Probably say in a draft agreement, then?
Yeah, to continue this with, uh, a hundred and eighty day notice.
Continue it for how long?
Well, like I said, I would like this, I would like to see a year, but.
Well, you.
But that may not be legally.
I, I, a definite term, I think, is an issue, I, I, I think if you do it as a month-to-month with a hundred and eighty day notice, then, then it's a end-up, and it would be.
It's going to take them six months to get around to an A-hire, like you said, it's going to be three months in bidding, and it's going to take them two more months to figure out what they want to do.
I'd rather see it in writing, though, I don't, you know, want the next administration or the next councilman or whoever, you know, everything changes, everything's fluid, so if it's not black and white and in ink, it, it means nothing.
Well, well, here's what I look at, uh, right now, with this, we have a hundred and eighty days, but right now, we have till, what, April eighteenth or whatever, so that's quite an accomplishment there, so, I mean, I, I don't know, I guess that we can, if someone wants to make a motion on that, then we can, we can vote on that, and I think we pretty much talked this to death, do I have a motion?
I don't know, I think you can just simply make the request to the law director.
Oh, okay, do this paper.
To, to do that, and you've given any parameters.
Then we could, we could look it over, and then.
You've given any parameters, and then you could come back, bring back, and we should have it for the next meeting, right?
So you're, so you're wanting a hundred and eighty days from April eighteenth?
Well, a hundred and eighty days from now.
No, it'd be a hundred and eighty day notice to, if, the way I would phrase it would be, if, if there's a change in the lease or anything else, that you would have to provide a hundred and eighty day notice to, to be off the tower, if that was required, at some point.
Because right now, we could, with this, we could go out there April nineteenth and say, we don't want to do that, and we don't want to do that, and we don't want him to worry that we wouldn't do that, so.
So at least it proves.
One, maybe I can ask in the shop, when, when a contract comes due, do, do contracts normally, do you, do, do you send a notice out a hundred and eighty days before the end of the contract, is that how it usually, is that how a lot of the contracts are, I mean, like, on, on insurance contracts and stuff like that?
Thirty days.
Okay, but I mean, it's thirty days before.
Before it, before it goes dead, right?
Yep.
Thirty days before your renewal, you'll get a renewal statement to say.
So if it's just not, it's just not thirty days, it's thirty days before it's, before it dies.
Yes.
So it's at the end of, it's at the end of that contract, per se.
Prior to that.
So it would be a hundred and eighty days before the end of, of whatever parameters you would set, so if you would set it for a year, then it'd be a hundred and eighty days prior to the one-year.
Dead.
Drop dead.
Yeah, well, the hundred and eighty days would be from when we decide, if we would decide for someone else, and we would give, you'd say, okay, we've got, Verizon's going to do this now, uh, you've got a hundred and eighty days to get your equipment off of there.
But, but you haven't told me what the expiration time is.
Well, a hundred and eighty days could be tomorrow, and if gives in six months, or it could be in six months, and that'll give them a year, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but that's arbitrarily, I, I, I'd rather see it in stone, that you're giving them a year, you know.
It would be my opinion that that would be unlawful.
Okay.
Just saying.
That's fine, I mean, there's other lawyers out there, I'm sure, you know, that's what I'm getting at, so, I, I mean, what I'm getting at is, you know, in the court system, lawyers argue back and forth, and, and what I, you know, I was led to believe, you know, when we had done this, that it was legal and it was viable, and, and, so, I mean, and not if you taught me otherwise.
Well, it's ten years ago when it was done.
Okay.
And, and we, and, and current methods, I mean, we talked about whether or not it was going to be permissible to do it as an exchange of services, um, there are some of these agreements that are out there that I've looked at, um, unfortunately, those were largely with charter, well, not largely, uh, areas with charter municipalities, which can set their own rules, they can go outside of ORC, um, and, and do those things, but as a statutory say, you were much more limited, when you look at a lot of these kind of, these kind of contracts and, uh, public bid kind of contracts, especially with power leases and stuff like that, it's, it's changing all the time, um, charter cities have just a far greater leeway to do those things, and we're kind of beholden by, uh, ORC, and that's, you know, that's where we, you know, we're a tower, I mean.
Well, without that discussion, I wouldn't have learned that, so.
Yeah.
Uh, that's the idea of having our discussion.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, no, I think that's an important distinction, because you can, I mean, you can go Google right now, and find a hundred of these that, that they do it exactly the way we do it, or we, we've done it here, um, but in, in everyone I looked at, it was, it was charter municipalities or some, some other agreement, um, yeah, so that, that's, that's the.
All right, then I'll leave, leave it up to, uh.
So, do we have a timeline set for when this is going to go out to, to bids now?
Well, that's administrative.
And I'm asking if this.
What, I mean, I'm sure there's nothing we can do, and I, I guess they're working on that, the last.
Yeah, and I guess it's not, someone's not here.
Yeah.
Good question, Andrew?
Um, if the city can do a land swap for public land and not have it go for bid.
We can't.
We wouldn't.
I don't know that they've ever done that, but we, it would not be permissible, would not be permissible to do a land swap in, in most.
You mean like the old furniture store going for the Pines reservoir?
Yeah, and I, I, I think that was something that was thrown out there, but I don't think that was ever.
Because I, I was just going to say, I'd be, I'd be willing to let the city park some stuff down on my property, you know, for, kind of like mutual exchange for parking on the tower.
Okay, so. Andy, I'll try to get an answer from your, for your question, from the administration, and see if we can get a timeline set on when, what they're looking at, and, uh, let you know, let the council know where they are with that.
So the law director will work on that?
I, I will, I'll, I'll put together an agreement, and, and I'll, and I, I'll exchange an email with Kirk, and let him see a draft of what I'm putting together, get some input from him, and when I bring it back to you guys, that time, maybe you have something that wavelength is reasonably comfortable with, that you guys might have your input and see what we can come up with.
So you'll have a force at the next, maybe?
Yes, in two weeks. I'll try to have it before then.
Okay.
I mean, it's not, it's not a huge, I mean, it's not going to be a thirty page document or something.
Yeah, we're getting, like, counsel might, that'd be great, that way you'd, you know.
It was time to look at it before.
Yeah, just, I mean, as far as these letters, I didn't even receive these letters until I signed up to pay.
Okay, any more discussion on this? All right, if not, let's adjourn this public land's building committee at seven oh three, why do I always get, I don't know.
What am I, what am I?
Ooh, is that a dig? Okay, the, the finance committee is scheduled next, and, uh, those items are being held over to the next meeting for finance, okay, they're not going to be discussed this evening.
Oh, great, you can.
So we're cutting down here.
Boom, boom, I didn't get that out of that one.
All right, I will call the economic development committee meeting to order at seven oh four PM. All right, uh, members president, Martin Keever, Dan Meyer-Balbert, Trish.
No, you're not reading anything here, you just go to your first topic.
All right, Besire's Tourism and Visitors Bureau, do I need to read the letter that's attached?
No.
No?
I think Mr. Myers might have a report that he can give you, uh, he attended the meeting yesterday.
I attended the meeting yesterday, um, a lot of good discussion, talking about ways to increase, you know, getting people active and coming to town and doing things, uh.
Oh, good morning.
Yeah?
More visitors to town means more income coming in, I think that in the past, they've, of course, they, they receive, uh, part of their funding, uh, through the bed tax for the, uh, the hotel, the, the express out north of town, I don't know how close the other one is to opening, but when they do, they too will be collecting a bed tax, that, uh, we are required then by a high revised code to, uh, fund a tourism bureau, so, uh, the, we are providing, and I think, I, the number seventeen thousand dollars sticks in my mind, I, I forgot to talk with Joyce today to find out, okay, it's attached, okay, how much the.
The last page.
Oh, it's the very last page, you can see how much we, we, oh, good grief, yes.
Little bit more than seventeen.
That's the bed tax collected, but they don't get it all.
They get fifty percent.
They get fifty percent.
Right, about twenty-two.
Yeah, so twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, we get in seven, in twenty-seventeen, so, uh, I mean, we're a major contributor to the, pardon me?
You'll be mentioned.
Yes.
Okay, um, also, it was decided in their meeting yesterday, they've been tossed around the idea over the last year or two of a, a different location, um, that might suit them better, and they, uh, they came to a conclusion in the meeting yesterday that they are going to move effective, I believe, April first, sorry, May, uh, May first, no, April first, April first, but, um, until.
April fourth or what?
Yeah, until the, uh, until everybody's been notified, uh, you know, like, they're currently ordering things, I'm going to withhold the location just until that's cleared up, just to say that.
It's here in town.
Yes.
That's Las Vegas.
I did the same, is it still here in town?
Well, I know from talking to Trish, um, up there at the Tourism Bureau, she's got a lot of things that she's working on with, uh, having, uh, some, basically excerpts from people in town to put out, uh, I think it was a calendar or something to that effect, that had testimonials from people in town to kind of, and show what things there are here going on, what things that she can get into to help draw attention here more, I know she said that she's been working on some tours, and there's one lady that, uh, actually wrote a testimonial for her that does her tours, and commended Trish for how she has everything set up, has the activities for everybody to do when they come in, and she said it's just a, a very well-run tourism bureau, so, Trish doesn't want to talk about it there, so. Anybody else have any things that they'd like to input, or have any questions, or?
Yeah, I just would like to say, having served on it, um, everybody that's on that tourism board, they're all committed, you know, they're truly committed, they live and breathe it every day, and, and, uh, they really want to see it succeed, and they want to see Crawford County, uh, not only Besire's, but they want to see Crawford County Tourism succeed, and so, it's, uh, it helps all of us.
Has, uh, has the county made any indication whether or not they're going to move forward with their three percent of the bed tax county-wide?
I have not heard anything from anybody outside of the Besire's Tourism Bureau, they didn't really discuss it, so, I'm not knowledgeable yet.
Yeah.
I think that, I'm going to assume here that they would have talked about it if there was any.
But we, we had talked about, they'd talked about it a couple of years ago, and it kind of fell apart, and, you know, because we have, we have a lot of bed breakfasts in the, in the county, and some hotels that are not inside city limits that, you know, would be beneficial to our, to our tourism.
Do you have anything else?
All right, next on the list is Board of Zoning Appeals appointment, um, tonight we did meet with, uh, Mr. Bill Stoker, and we also met with, uh, Mr. Tom Rar, some good meetings, uh, found out a little bit about them, and some of their qualifications and experiences, um, were able to ask some questions on how they may handle some certain situations, um, so, good feedback, now we'll have a discussion, and, I mean, can, will we do that tonight, or?
You can, or if you want to, uh, I know the BCA, I believe, is meeting tomorrow, this, tomorrow?
No.
Tuesday, they're meeting Tuesday.
We have the BBSA, part of the Board of Zoning, it's a BBSA, which is the same group, Board of Zoning Standards.
Okay.
Is meeting for a case.
Okay.
Well, I know I would like to at least hang off right now, since I'd like to, uh, be in the Mark Kean and late to the meeting, I'd like to have him, you know, hear what was said, and get some address on what happened and everything, so that way he's informed and can make a, a good decision as well, so.
He can share that information with me, okay?
That's what I figured, yeah.
My, if you don't care about her.
Yeah, well, great, tonight, by your saying.
Well, yeah.
Well, I guess, yeah, in a sense, yeah, because he does, he has worked for her before, too, so.
Oh, okay. That's.
I think, yeah, so. Conflict of interest, she can't be involved.
That is probably not.
Okay, understood.
Yep.
So you can do that, and then we'll, uh, maybe, uh, we'll be ready to, if we have to, we could have for the next. for the next council meeting, a very short meeting to where you do the appointment. And then we'll do it at the next council meeting, because we do have to pass legislation.
I think that would be perfect, that would be great, is to schedule a special meeting half hour before our next council meeting.
Okay.
And do that.
Okay.
That will be it for economic development, so I will call meeting order at seven eleven, or recess. Do we have any public participation at this point?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second it. Motion by Mr. Keever, second five, Mr. Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned at seven twelve PM. Motion back.
Thank you.